As potentially spying. And that caused a lot of concern, I think, in the business community.
So basically, they see economic information in some ways as state secrets and companies that dig it up as spies.
That's right. And in the last couple of months, against that backdrop, we saw officials raid the offices of two American firms, Mintz and Bain. So in that environment, it's very hard for companies to make sort of longer term commitments to China, such as building a factory or facility, adding staff. And so when companies think and they're looking out 10 years for what they want to do, China becomes less attractive of a place to park their money.
And do you have any sense of how much foreign investment has pulled back at this point?
You know, we saw one analysis saying basically that foreign direct investment in China fell to $20 billion in the first quarter. Now, that still sounds like a lot of money, but when you compare it to $100 billion last year in the first quarter.
Oh, wow.
That's a pretty significant drop.
So 20 billion in the first quarter of the year, but down from 100 billion the year before.
Correct.
So Dai, you've laid out really clearly some of the reasons why China's economy stalled. So, you know, domestic issues with the real estate sector, a quarter of the economy, chilling effect on foreign investment with all of the changes that Xi is making. But I'm still left wondering, what does that feel like for a Chinese person experiencing this? What is happening in Chinese society with these changes?
Yeah, there's broad concern about the economy. And the way that sort of manifests is that businesses are reluctant to invest, are reluctant to hire. And, you know, the people who get affected the most are young people. And we've really seen a spike in youth unemployment. It is at a record high, near 21%.
21%, wow.
Yeah. It's really a shocking number, considering that almost four years ago, the number was at 10%. And so young people tend to be the ones who are sort of most vulnerable when an economy turns south, because they have the least experience. And they're sort of the easiest to let go when things are not going great.
So they've been the ones that have particularly suffered in this downturn. I mean, one in five young workers is a pretty astounding number.
Yeah. And all this is happening at a really critical time, because in June and July, we're expecting another 11.8 million college graduates to come onto the job market. And these are people who have been sold sort of the version of the Chinese dream, you know, that if they go and work very hard and study for a long time, they will be given a future that is better than the ones that their parents had. And sort of an upward mobility. And yet they're finding themselves either struggling to find work or being forced to take jobs that they are really not that interested in.
So basically, China's college-educated young people, AKA China's future, are kind of facing the prospect of, you know, going back to same old factory jobs that their parents had.
Correct. And even in jobs that were once sourcing a stable but not super attractive, such as government jobs, bureaucratic roles, even those jobs are becoming incredibly competitive. We saw last year that basically there are 70 applicants for every one opening. And so even those kind of jobs are in high, high demand.
Can Beijing turn this around? Like, is the government talking openly about measures it might take to boost the economy?
There is an awareness that something needs to be done about the economy. And we're actually starting to see some policy changes. You know, last month, China's largest state-run banks lowered the interest rates on deposits. The idea is that by lowering those rates, you're giving people an incentive to go out and spend money in the economy instead of just parking the money in the bank. But it's a little too early to tell if that's going to work. Another possible policy idea the country could use is raising exports. And to explain how that might work, you know, the idea here is that by incentivizing companies to produce more goods for exports or make their goods more competitive abroad, it would create more jobs and prompt faster growth. But that's going to be difficult, because there just isn't as much appetite to buy Chinese goods out in the world right now. And just last week, we just got export data that showed exports had dropped 12% in June, which is the biggest drop in three years. So it's all looking quite difficult at the moment.
So Dai, coming back to where we started this conversation, you know, the explosive growth that China saw for all of those years, it really feels like China is very far from those days, that galloping stallion that the whole world wanted a piece of. So I guess my question for you is, is the Chinese economic miracle over?
I think it's too early to say that. I do think we are moving to a new phase of the economy where, you know, the Chinese economy may not grow at double-digit rates as it once did, or even the 7% or 8% that it once did. I think what we're going to see is perhaps a little bit of slower growth. And, you know, it might have to come to, you know, accept a new reality that it won't necessarily be the engine of growth in the world. But I don't think we should dismiss China's importance still in the global economy. It is still the second biggest economy in the world. It has 1.3 billion consumers. It has the most sophisticated and well-built manufacturing industry in the world. And so it'll still remain incredibly important. But I do think that we're starting to transition to a new phase of the Chinese economy. And that transition may not necessarily be smooth. And what we'll see are perhaps more bumpy periods like we're seeing now. And ultimately, how sort of Beijing reacts to those will really tell us kind of what the next phase of the Chinese economy will be.
Dai, thank you for coming on the show.
Oh, thank you for having me.
On Monday morning, China released economic data showing that its economy had slowed dramatically in the spring. The economy grew less than 1% in the second quarter compared to the previous quarter. As exports tumbled, a real estate slump deepened, and debt-ridden local governments cut spending after running low on money. The figures amounted to a full-year growth rate of a little over 3%, down from about 9% in the previous quarter. Dai Wakabayashi is a business reporter covering Asia for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by the Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation, featuring the podcast Tight Knit: Workforce Development. Tight Knit follows job seekers and employers in the pursuit of good work and good workers. Tight Knit is available across podcast platforms. Innovative, immersive, and skillfully investigated, The Daily brings listeners today's stories as only The New York Times can report them. For more on today's episode, go to nytimes.com/thedaily.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily by going to nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Sabrina Tavernise. See you tomorrow.
For thrill-seekers, few attractions offer as much fun as a roller coaster. But recently, riders in Wisconsin were stuck upside down for hours after a mechanical failure, and another spotted a huge crack in a supporting beam of a North Carolina.
The 7 o'clock PM City Council session is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Mrs. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And I call Mr. President. I will, the invocation will be delivered by our Vice Mayor Joseph L. Cobb tonight. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as we have our invocation.
Let us pray. Do all the good you can, by all the means you can, in all the ways you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long as ever you can. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank Vice Mayor Cobb for the invocation. And welcome everybody to our second session of today. And now I'm going to call on Councilman Lou Pretty to make the certification for our closed meeting, to read the certification.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and, two, only such business matters, as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of Council in attendance.
Second.
All right, second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. Thank you. And we will now change the order of the program a little. I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Cobb to make a presentation, well, he'll be leading a presentation with regards to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'm going to call on Steve Grammer, and I'll let Vice Mayor Cobb introduce.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This afternoon at our City Council meeting, we shared a proclamation identifying July 26th as American Disabilities Act Awareness Day. It's an annual commemoration of the act that was adopted in 1990. This evening, we're honored to have Stephen Grammer here, who is an advocate, has been for years, probably all of his life, I would dare say. And he's here tonight to share with us a brief video called "A Life Like Yours." And in the video, it describes a little bit about his life, but also how life has changed for people with disabilities since the ADA was signed into law 33 years ago. So I'll just turn your, first introduce Steve and welcome him, and then turn your attention to the screens for the video presentation.
On July 26, 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law by President George H.W. Bush. This landmark civil rights legislation was meant to increase access and opportunity for people with disabilities across community life. Steve Grammer, who was born with cerebral palsy, was just 10 years old when the ADA was signed into law. He remembers what life was like for people who were living with disabilities at the time.
As a child living with a developmental disability, I was placed in a school for intellectual disabilities, which I didn't have. However, there were no other options. At that time, all disabilities were grouped together, and people generally didn't recognize the difference between an intellectual disability and a developmental disability. So the children were not educated properly.
Now, 33 years after the induction of the ADA, Steve enjoys many of the freedoms that he did not have before. However, there is still work to do. Under the ADA, people with disabilities are entitled to live in the least restrictive environment possible. But unfortunately, that is not always the case for Steve or others like him.
Some of the challenges I face are finding carriages and finding safe and affordable housing. It is my desire to remain living in the community, which is my ADA right. I can only continue to live in the community with the proper supports that I need. If I do not have these supports, I would be forced into institutional living, which is where I spent 10 years of my life.
Steve enjoys doing the same things that most people do, things like living in and interacting within his community, going to places where he needs and wants to go at his convenience, and having the everyday freedoms to make choices that aren't limited to bureaucratic restrictions. Steve admits that life has gotten better for people with disabilities under the ADA. However, he still insists there is much work yet to be done in order for people with disabilities to have a life like yours.
Thank you for honoring the 33rd anniversary of the ADA. Road Note does not give disabled people equal housing opportunities or transportation. I encourage you to take this month to think about people with disabilities so that we can have a life like yours.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. We will now go into our joint meeting. I know many of you here, we have, this is the first time, we got a new setup, having joint meetings at 7 o'clock in the evening. But we're going to be meeting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see all the faces. I know we appoint you, but I don't see you that much after the appointment process. So I'm going to ask, Madam Clerk, you don't need to call the roll for us anymore, do you?
I will call the roll, and then the Parks and Recs will call their roll.
Okay, please do so.
Okay. Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here.
Okay.
Terry McGuire.
Present.
Jerome Stevens. Alex Farge.
Here.
Elvira Verbit. Kathy Carter. Raphael Leig. Jim Pickens.
Here.
Debbie Pitts.
Here.
Tim Paulette Thomas. Jared Rigby.
Here.
Diana Simmons.
All right, thank you. Well, at this time, I'm going to call and thank you, Mr. Clark, Michael Clark, who's the Director of Parks and Recreation. And I'm going to call on the Chair to start us off tonight, and he will do that. And Mr. McGuire, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lee. We want to start by thanking Council for doing this joint meeting, which we understand is the first, or at least the first in a really long time. And we really appreciate that, because we all serve and volunteer our time, because we really love our parks and our sports programs and our programming and everything that our green spaces offer us. And so we're here today for this. Not everyone here is here, but really want to thank you for making the time. And we have kind of a full agenda. We were going to go around and introduce ourselves, but I think you caught our names when we did our intro. So I will jump right in with something that we wanted to ask for your consideration around, and that's around our structure and composition. And that's that we know that you all appreciate the role of Parks and the importance of our Parks and Rec Department. And what we would like for you to consider, as we think about, and want to also work with you on how do we communicate better, ensure that there's a two-way street with communication on matters that relate to public parks and our public space, green spaces, is legitimizing the committee by codifying us like other advisory boards to the city are. And in that also, clarifying our roles and responsibilities. I think that would, or could help us, you know, stay in better touch, and then also give us clarity around how we should expect to operate with the city, both Manager's Office and Council.
Thank you.
Could I ask, I'm sorry. Michael, could you provide maybe a little more history on why it's not necessary, why it hasn't been codified in city code so far? Because I know there's a way the Parks and Rec Board came about. And it'd be better, I think, if the public and Council understood more about that.
So from what I understand, the initial creation of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board stemmed from the master plan that the department put together in 2000. And initially, it was developed as an ad hoc committee, much like our Mill Mountain Advisory Board was ad hoc. So it was developed to assist with the development of that master plan. And it stayed in existence since then. It just, it hasn't been brought before Council to be formally codified.
But like the Mill Mountain Advisory Board has, a step has been taken there to put it formally in the city code, where this is continued to operate from that initial resolution. We just don't have a section of city code dedicated to Parks and Rec Board.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, and you, and Mr. McGuire, I'm going on the agenda that I have before Mayor talks about update on current Parks and Recreation, the project initiatives. Okay?
Before we go to that, Mr. Smith, can I ask a question? Thank you. Mr. McGuire, you said something about needing direction from Council. Do you need direction from us, or do you need direction from Parks and Recs? Do you not understand your role as a board, or do you need some clarification? I'm trying to understand what you were asking.
I think it would be, one of the things that we really want to see is just clarification on how we communicate with city leadership and decision-makers. And when we should expect to be included around projects, when we, you know, should we be on the lookout for things? Is there a process for things being flagged for us? And then what should we expect, like, what's our role? And what do you expect of us? And what should we, how should we expect to engage with Council?
So is that applicable to Council and also to administration? Or are you just looking at Council in particular?
Well, I'm not totally sure if the answer to the question.
I just want to make sure we provide to you what it is that you're seeking or you're asking us for. So I'm trying to, trying to understand what it is that you need from Council. And it may be something that you need from the administration, not Council.
Well, Mr. McGuire, if I may, input there. So we would need, at the very least, an ordinance from Council that formally seeks to put them into a section of city code. I'd see be a baseline of something, the operations procedures that they have, whether or not they change or stay the way that they are currently. It would make them one of our formal, more permanent boards. Correct me if I'm not, permanent board's not the correct term to use, Councilmember Moon Reynolds. But right now, where we have the Mill Mountain Advisory Board in our city code, we don't actually have the Parks and Rec Advisory Board in our city code. And so they're operating just by their own bylaws, which they have the authority to update themselves as long as it's approved by administration, and whatever loose guidelines are around boards and commissions generally. But their relationship has not been formalized in city code with us. And coming from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as a former Chair, and this is one thing I talked to the city manager about when I first came on, and it actually made its way into our strategic plan that we adopted earlier this year about trying to see what's the relationship between our citizen advisory boards and Council itself. Because I know from serving on the board, that is a very ambitious board, who doesn't like to sit around and wait for a task to do, that they will find a task to do themselves and will take that initiative on. But they need a better understanding and guidance from Council, and what code to look at to see what that relationship necessarily looks like. And I think that they have incredible potential to do a lot for the city if that code is put into place. Certain people who have served on the Parks and Rec Board in the past include, like, our current Judge Onsley Ware. It is a place where people seek to serve their community. But that codification, I think, is important, and it probably needs to be expanded on than what their bylaws currently are. I think in the past, they've sent us initiatives that haven't garnered response, because it might fall outside of their purview of what their authority is. But their authority hasn't been very clearly defined, other than having to update a master plan every decade when they're a board that meets monthly.
Well, we're going to tell everybody what their authority is tonight. So we'll go, and I'll go back with you, with Mr. Clark, and he can just update us and update our audience here on what projects or initiatives are going on right now.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got it broken down in several different categories. The first is an update on our summer programming. Currently, we have the Summer Fun at Washington Park going on during the week. So far to date, we're averaging around 50 young people a day at that program. We've served around 550 young people so far at that program. We've worked with the folks that run BoxFit and Hoop Love Academy to offer some summer programming for boxing and for basketball. Both of those are being held at Addison Middle. They're both full. The boxing program has 12 young people registered, and the basketball program has 10 young people registered. That's the, basketball's going on this week, and the BoxFit program is the week of July 24th. Our Summer Play Program, which is our standard summer camp daycare program, it's been nearly full all summer. Right now, we have about 16 openings across three centers. And that stays pretty popular with folks, and we do have some fluctuation in that with vacations and those type of things. And then from the outdoor recreation realm, we offered three camps this year. All three were full with a waiting list. We structured those to take place during the time where no other camps were taking place. So typically, there's not a lot of daycare programs the week immediately following school letting out, and then the week before school starts. So we scheduled two of those camps during those weeks. Those are both full. And then because of the demand, we offered a third camp as well. And then a fun program that we do for adults that's going right now is kickball. And if you, if you get an opportunity to go to River's Edge and watch grown adults play kickball, it's a lot of fun. And some of them take it a little more serious than they should. But it is a competitive sport. So the next thing I want to talk about is our deferred maintenance projects. Since Fiscal '21, we've invested over $4 million in deferred maintenance across the park system. We do have a handful of projects that are still outstanding right now. Most notably, those are parking improvements along Morgan Avenue at Morningside Park. So because of the urban farm, the community garden, as well as the mountain bike trails that are put in there, that park sees a lot of visitation now. So folks were parking really all over the place, on the street, in the park. So we're putting in some timber guard rail, and we're improving the shoulder for some on-street parking for folks that visit Morningside. The tennis, roller, hockey, and basketball courts at Huff Lane Park, we have those paved. We're just waiting on the pavement to cure so that we can put the paint down and redo those. We're updating park signage throughout the system. That's been a slow process. I'm sure you all have noticed the hodgepodge of park signs that we've had in different parks, some dating back to the late '90s and early 2000s, with any number of different logos and everything else on it. So we're steadily making our way through the park system, replacing all of those signs with our latest sign. And then lastly, we have two playgrounds that'll be going in, in late August and early September, one at Belmont Park and one at East Gate Park. So those are supposed to be shipped to us in So those are supposed to be shipped to us in, in August and will be installed later that month in early September. In terms of capital projects, the Roanoke River Greenway Bridge, the gap section is wrapping up. We had a walkthrough with that project on Friday and we have a ribbon cutting on July 28th for that. Tinker Creek Greenway is scheduled to be complete in December. We ran into some issues with an older water line that we're working with the Western Virginia Water Authority on to replace that and slowed the project down just a little bit. And that section is from Mason Mill Park down to 13th Street. And that's a first phase. And then the second phase will take us from 13th Street to Fallon Park. And at that point, Tinker Creek Greenway will run all the way from R.C.I.T. to Fallon Park. So it'll be a, a long connection of, of Greenway Trail. Eureka Center is currently in design. We have a community update meeting on July 25th where we're also gonna be talking about master planning for McAden Park. There's some interest from community members to develop out that park space. So we're entering into a master planning session with that, following the Eureka Center meeting that night. The Washington Park Pool Project is currently in procurement. We're reviewing submissions and setting up interviews for consultants. A company called Dovetail out of Fredericksburg, they're a historic preservation company, they'll be in the week of July 24th to do some documentation of the house in Washington Park and the rest of the park itself. The skate park project is currently in procurement and we anticipate releasing that request for qualifications in the coming weeks. That will be a design-build process where we'll contract out with one singular company to do both the design and the construction of the skate park. And that will work in tandem with the bridge replacement project and it won't interfere with, with any of that. So we'll be able to, to get that done relatively quickly in Wasina Park. Our new headquarters construction at the former Richardson Whalen Building is currently in procurement. We had to go out to bid for construction documents because of the water line break over the Christmas holiday. So we had to gut the inside because of all the, the water damage. So we have to have construction documents in order to do the remodeling. So that's currently in procurement and hope to get on that soon. And then finally, the In River Park Consultants are about to submit their first permit to the Army Corps of Engineers. So that will be the most lengthy process and the permitting process for the In River Park. And we have a community input meeting scheduled for that on August 2nd. And just in general, we are scheduled to do an update to our 10-year master plan. Our accreditation process dictates that we do a five-year update to the document. That one's currently in procurement and we hope to get it out here in the coming weeks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I'm gonna go down the line and ask the colleagues of the council, but let me just say this. You know, with the number of things we have going, the free camps this summer, basketball, boxing, you know, there are a lot of things that we do. I often heard all the time, there's not a lot for youth to do. Now, this is in conjunction with the other things that I know there's going on through the, through the gun violence, gun violence and prevention groups that they're meeting in libraries and other areas. And I just, you know, it always puzzles me how we say it's not a lot, nothing to do around here for kids to do. That's, I'm impressed with that. Matter of fact, you all put me out of business. Let me say that generally. You know, I have the lead youth outdoor basketball program. Well, we had to pull it back this year because we didn't have enough kids that were interested because they got all these other free camp, our camp was free, but they had these other camps. Then you got the, the, the twin hoops, and I'm not gonna give them away, our time, all these other groups. But you got, you got these programs that are going and so how much basketball can you have and boxing and all of those things? There are a lot of things for young people to do if they want to apply themselves. So thank you all. Thank you for that. That's so important. All right, anybody got any thoughts or wanna follow up on what Mr. Clark has discussed? All right. Is there any other issue that we wanna, recommendation, communications?
I think move on to the structure and composition, or did we already pass that?
Okay.
We just did the update.
All right, the structure, composition, Chair and Board members, you got the floor?
I have the mic.
Oh, man, that's, they got you.
Go on, I didn't hear you. There's, there's a couple of things and, and Michael made mention of the master plan and that it's going to procurement. So I assume we're hiring a consultant to do the park's master plan update? Okay. And, and, and I'm new to the board and I wanna thank you for the opportunity to serve. But how much its citizen involvement is involved with the consultant in the, the update of the master plan? I think the more citizen involvement we have throughout every level, the better the product will be. And that goes back to the earlier comment about communication. Communication's essential. The more we talk about it and interact with each other, the better the product will be. And I think more citizens will come out, to your point Mayor, that no matter how many times you talk about the wonderful activities that go on, people will say they don't know about it. You can never have too much communication about what you're doing good and what you're trying to do. So for that, I would hope and I would like to see that this board could be very much involved in the update of the master plan. I understand that we have a deficit of parkland in Roanoke City of about, what, 67 acres? And I, I happen to live in a neighborhood, a very large neighborhood off of Hollins Road, off the Old, Old Mountain Road area. We do not have a park at all in our neighborhood. The parks there are basketball goals that hang over the streets for kids to play basketball. And we all know that's not a real good, safe situation. But I would very much like to see us take a look at the master plan and be able to prioritize where those deficits are and let the citizens know loudly, you know, we, we need and want your input and want your help. And I, I would really like to see some expansion of the park system, especially in our area. We desperately need it. Even to the point when our neighborhood, and we have a very active neighborhood association, we can't find a place to meet that's in our neighborhood. We have a couple of churches that have adopted us and take us in and let us meet, but there's no community meeting spot for us. So very much like to see that. And have a recommendation, I hope it fits with this, in the master plan. I, I would like to see an inventory of all the city-owned properties that are available for parklands. I would say, I did a little quick look on the, the real estate website for the city and I found a 57-acre parcel owned by the city in our neighborhood. And I got excited. I don't know what it's for, but we are a stone's throw from Roanoke City. And I, and I think it's a, a really good opportunity at the foot of Reed Mountain to, to have a collaborative effort to, to create maybe a regional park setting between Roanoke City and Roanoke County in that area at the foot of Reed Mountain. And the land that's, the one parcel is very close to there. I don't know what you're gonna do with it, but I think every piece of land that's not developed may have multiple opportunities to do other things with it. So it's kinda where I'm, what I'm thinking and I hope that we can take that look and see if there's something we can do with lands that we already own.
Thank you, Ms. Pitt. Where's your neighborhood? What's your neighborhood?
Old Mountain Road.
Okay.
Off of Hollins. And the closest public facility is Monterey Elementary School. So you gotta go across Hollins Road, gotta get out of our neighborhood, go across Hollins Road, go across Peters Creek. And it's, it's a long, long hike to get to a public park area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanna reiterate what Ms. Pitt was saying. We have several parks in predominantly black communities that need more investment, needs more beautification. One of the things, when I became disabled in 2007, I was told I wouldn't be able to walk again. And so going to a park was sorta out of the ordinary because they're not ADA accessible. And we need to have more ADA, ADA accessible parks. When you look at Washington Park and you look around from Lincoln Terrace to Gainesboro, 10th Street, Melrose, the lower part of Melrose and 1100 Rock, you got Madison, McDowell, all through there, there are no community centers at all for students, no after-school programs. So we need to look into providing additional funds for Parks and Rec to be able to provide these type of services. And we, we really need a community center. We, we have a lot of elderly people who don't have a place to go, place to go and play bingo and things like that. And I've been asked to look into some outdoor physical gym type of equipment, just as an option of just something to, you know, give people something to do. And if they can't afford to go to a gym, they can work out on the outside. And I've noticed that the closest library to the Washington Park area, it's, you've got Gainesboro, but from that, you don't have a community center. The closest community center would be Eureka, and that's over a mile long. So probably about a mile and a half. And so I'm asking that you look into some of the historical black parks and let there be some type of pay equity to fill, to fill that gap. The Washington Park hasn't had much investment in over 20 years on that lower level. So I would like to make a resolution that when we're looking at this park, not to tear down the 1837 Caritaker's home. It is the only two-parlour home that still remains. And when the historian went in on June 6th, he identified the building as being in a condition that can be restored. And he gave us points and checks as to things that we can do. And this, the Washington Park Association, which is just forming, wants to keep this building, to use it as a museum on the lower level and to use it as some type of community center for youth. And the Melrose Library is also looking into, and they're on board with us, doing some interactive storyboards to capture the stories from the people that visited the park or participated in the park. And so that's something that we want to do, to put inside of that building. So I looked for a stay of demolition, there was none. So I would like to make a resolution if the board would, if the council would, you know, allow us to keep that building in place until we were able to come up with a strategic plan. I've contacted the State Department of Preservation, there's over $100,000 for BIPOC funds that's Black and Indigenous people of color funds. There, there are other, several other sources that I've been in contact that are willing to help support and preserve this building.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, we've talked about that building, Washington Park Pool, and that house was a, a main piece of the conversation. Can you share? I don't want us to leave without information about where we are on that and the house and what we need to do for the pool. Could you share that?
Sure. So we had a community engagement meeting several weeks ago at Hill Street Baptist Church. And the message that, that I received that night was that when given the option of relocating the pool to the lower level of the park or having to find another park for the pool in place of the building, that folks would prefer to see the pool stay in Washington Park and go in that location and then remove the house with the installation of some type of interpretive panel or reuse, adaptive reuse of the bricks from the home as a part of the pool house. So that, that's our, our plan right now unless we receive different direction from, from you all.
All right. Mayor Lee?
Yes.
My concern there is, so the grant fund that Ms. Carter mentioned, the BIPOC Preservation Fund that's available by the General Assembly, it's a $10 million fund of which a million is available to any one entity to use. But the, the money that's gonna be sought by the state cannot be used to create something new that does not exist. It can only be used to restore something that is already in a place. And given the significance of this house, if we put forward an application and we're successful with it, I would hope there'd be some way to preserve it in some part, if not its entirety. But that's a policy decision for this council to make about whether or not they wanna seek moving forward, preserving the house and further delay replacing this pool or to, to go ahead and make the movement happen and have the place, the pool be put in Washington Park lower. And that's a decision of there's been one community meeting, I just wanna make sure that that information was relevantly out there. Because it, the city would have to put up funds for planning, that, that money cannot be sought for planning from the state or the engineering. But if there's a, a proper plan in place and it is scored well by the state, this is a brand-new fund. It's dollars that we're otherwise not seeking for historic structure when we've had other historic structures in the city that we've seen gone to waste.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark, could that structure be moved? Is it safe to be moved or would you have to dismantle it brick by brick and then re-erect it someplace else?
I, I had the opportunity to go inside and see it myself and I'm by no means a expert.
So you can't move it?
I, I don't believe you would have to take it apart and rebuild it. I don't think it's structurally sound to move it. There's a reason why we have the, the two-by-fours in plastic around it, holding it up right now.
So it doesn't collapse?
Correct, yeah. The, the roof right now has, has holes in the, in the existing roof, so the tarp is, is over to prevent further damage inside the house. But we can get a, a formal conclusion from Mr. Pulis with the Department of Historic Resources from the state and he can, he can tell us what his recommendation is.
Okay, thank you.
He's already made his formal resolution, his on the state's website. And he is for the preservation, indicated the condition that it can be preserved.
But, but did he say how it would be preserved? Did he say we, it would have to be like, I mean, cause in order for them to have the pool, I think based on the conversation from the Hill Street meeting when they were at Hill Street Baptist Church, I think the consensus from that group is what Mr. Clark is saying. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clark, I was there for a little while, is that the, the group, the, the community wanted the pool, they didn't want the pool to have to go to some other community. So they wanted a pool. But, but, so you're saying that they can, they can dismantle, that they, whoever you talk to say you can dismantle it and re-erect it or it could be moved? Cause Mr. Clark is saying, the person that he talked to said it, it was not, they could not move it, it was not stable enough to be moved. They would have to dismantle it brick by brick and then re-erect it someplace else. So you're saying that's what they told you?
Yes, there are steps to take place before you move it or, or try to repair it. And one thing he did mention is that, of course, the floors would need to be redone. But when I went there and I've got pictures as well, and I also have a, a formal presentation, I'd like to do that another time with all that information and this Pulis information as well. But he said, there's a cable that goes around the building. Before you remove the cable, you wanna put in something like, they're called pension rods. And those pension rods will allow you to then go in and repair the cracks and things like that. And then if you have to, it can be moved. But there is a process and it can be preserved. And that's what's, you know, so remarkably about the building, that it can be preserved. And it is the only two-story parlor in the Roanoke Valley. And it was built before Roanoke became a city. That's what's so unique. And we want to be able to powerfully preserve at least one building that hasn't been, you know, demolished. And you've gotta, you know, if you support preservation, I'd like to see your support on this. If you care about historic properties and places, this, I think, would put us on the map. Because Washington Park is really the gateway to this city. You've got 460, 581, 220 in downtown. And so I've, I've been working with the waters, I've been working with the stormwater, they're putting in their budget to do some curb appeal. This is the third year that March has been up. So we've got a lot of things to be done to beautify that park, to build it up and to make it a viable community for all.
to make it a viable community for all people.
Okay. Well, thank, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get us sidetracked. I guess at some point, Mr. Clark, we'll have to have some further discussion about it. Because I know based on where we are now, the plan was to put the pool, because we're catching heck about that pool this summer. Everybody wants that pool. They're trying to figure out where are the kids going to go. So, but we can't have the pool there and the caretaker's cottage in the same spot. So, we've got to have some additional conversation. I realize that.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, the plan, the plan right now, that Michael mentioned, that is underway, design is underway for the pool to go in that location where that house is, based on previous conversations that we've all had, as well as with the community. And that's why Michael mentioned the historic preservation folks coming and actually looking at the building so they could actually take their measured drawings and other things for the preservation, not the preservation piece, but the documentation piece of it. If there is a desire to do anything else, anything else, the pool will be, we will stop the design of the pool, and it will be definitely delayed.
Well, that's why I wanted to pause right now, because that's not the direction we were headed in, based on the conversations from folks who met at Hill Street. The majority of the folks that were there were saying they wanted the pool. So, I don't want us to get up here and get confused about what it is the community wanted, because they were very clear that they wanted the pool and that they wanted the kids to have that pool. Because if we move it, they, I mean, there's nothing left in that area for the kids in that area. So, anyway, I'm not sure.
I just want to comment, Peter, that it was very clear. That room at Hill Street was very clear. I mean, young people, and old, were saying, it's the pool. They wanted those kids to have somewhere to swim. And that area was the only option we had. It was the only option there. We couldn't go back down to over there where the football field is, because there's still, that soil is not conducive to digging for a pool. So, we wanted the community, we engaged the community to say, tell us where you wanted this pool to go. And it was overwhelming. Said that we wanted a place for our kids to swim. We have to do what we have to do. We looked at that. And so, that's what we're doing. And they wanted the pool designed, built, really, yesterday. But we're going to do it, and we're moving as fast as we can. And as the city manager said, the design's already been set up there. And...
Mayor Lee, I met with Michael Clark...
Ms. Carter, will you use the microphone?
...for last year, around July this year, with other citizens and neighborhood organization leaders. And we had discussed the conditions of our park and what we wanted. And so, here we are, a year later, we're still talking about, you know, Washington Park. Washington Park has always been on the forefront of our parks in fixing it up. And when ECS, the engineering firm, did the survey of, on the upper level of the landfill, that survey he had completed was based on not the landfill that's up there, it's based, the study was compared with concrete and construction material, not landfill material. And in Appendix A, he listed some options that could be done to even build it up on the upper level, maybe closer to the football field. And then, the other, the other option was, on the other side of the house, there's a parking lot that's never been paved or kept up. You could put the pool closer to that area, because you don't have enough parking anyway to even put a pool for people to come in and out. You maybe get twenty, twenty-five cars in that small parking lot. So, there are some other options, and I'd like to look at some other options.
Mayor Lee.
Yes, sir.
If I may, has this issue been voted on by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board? I think this kind of goes back to our, what I think Terry brought up at the beginning, is what is the, you know, the role and responsibility of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board? At this point, right now, in this meeting, you know, if this is something that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has voted on and said, this is what we would like to do, then that's something for us to take under advisement. But, you know, I think at this time, we should be talking about, if that's something that, sorry, my jet lag is killing me. But basically, I think it needs to be voted on by this board, by this body, and then brought to us instead of, you know...
I'm going to have to disagree with you, Mr. Valleson, simply because the community was involved in that decision-making.
Yeah.
Because it was a community project. So, I don't want, I don't want us to kind of negate what they have done in their discussions, because they've met multiple times. I know the last time, Michael, I know they met at Hill Street a few weeks ago, because we were all there. But prior to that, when did they meet with the community? When did you all meet with the community? Because I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we did meet with community members. And our goal is always to try to see...
I think, I think we're on the same page, actually.
Okay, okay.
Because what I'm trying to say is that this may not be the appropriate time for us to be discussing this. Because if we're having a joint meeting of the council and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and if the Parks and Rec Advisory Board hasn't voted on this or done it as a body, then it's something that should be tabled to another meeting.
I agree with you. I just don't want to negate what the community has already decided on until there's further discussion.
We want to be careful, because you can confuse people. You know, we confuse people here, and we're voting, and we're meeting. Community engagement, as you said, as we said, that was so important. But, Michael, you were at all those meetings. If you could just summarize that and why we there, we talked about that. We were anxious to keep that house there. But it was very clear to me at that meeting, it's either the house or the pool.
That's correct.
It's either the house or the pool.
In order to get the size facility that's comparable to what we had before and have the necessary parking to accommodate it, both structures can't go in the same spot.
Right.
That's the only spot in lower Washington that's not in the floodplain. We can't put a pool in the floodplain or the floodway. So, if we were to move to somehow preserve the house and have the pool there, the house would have to go somewhere else in the park, and it wouldn't be in the lower part of the park.
And you got a lot of children in that area.
Because we can't put the structure back in the floodplain. The only other place to build in the park would be in the floodplain next to Le Crun. And we can't put the structure back in there.
Mr. Rickby.
I'll just ask the resolution, not demolish it, at this time, the Washington Park Association can come up with a plan and continue to work and seek out funding.
Well, we'll leave that out. I know what we've heard and done, I guess, at Washington Park, people there at, is that, I mean, Hill Street. Okay. All right. Anybody else?
I was going to say something earlier. He's been on the board for the, he's the only member that I know that's been on the board longer than I was.
I was just going to say, we as a board, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, that we've not made any recommendations on this as of yet. So, I know Ms. Carter's very passionate about this point, and, but we have not made any decisions as a whole as the Parks and Rec Advisory Board on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll say, it is precisely why, when we were reviewing applications for members to put on the board, that I sought so much for Ms. Carter to be on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. She's been showing up to meetings and talking about this topic for a number of years, to a point where I said that this is a position where I think you would benefit from your advocacy regardless of what decision is made. My concern is that it doesn't seem as though this has ever come as a formal decision before us on council collectively or before this body. And despite having any kind of organized understanding about what the responsibilities are in this decision-making process, or where we are, aside from this one community committee where there was some consensus that the pool ought to be put in, seeing that we also put them in a place where we've already taken the pool from them first, and said that you either accept this pool being put in this place, or you go more than one summer, at least one summer, without having a pool for this area. I think that this topic was on the entire time, was on the Parks and Rec Board for a number of years. To me, it seemed like it was kind of just pushing direction. There was no, if a formal decision had been made by either their group or ours, we would already be in that position. But they're not fully understanding what their authority is, because we haven't ever fully defined it for them. And when they send recommendations to us, or at least in my experience, from being on the board and both being on council now, we neglect to really ever get them much of any response, or say, you have no authority around this topic. It's, they're a board who's looking for something to do, who has input on different things. I think in proper legislative procedure, what would be more appropriate is when we have certain topics that are pertinent to their board's purview, that we refer them to their committee and ask for a recommendation to be reported back to us. But we can either follow that recommendation, or we can go in a different direction. But we have to seek to involve our citizen advisory boards and commissions in ways that are productive for them. I'll say, most of the turnover that I see from board members on this board are from people who are frustrated at trying to understand what their role is and try to seek to do something, and very little coming of it. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This, I think, goes back to the question that Terry, again, talked about in the beginning, is what is the role of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board? And I would question, have you all come up with what you think the Parks and Rec Advisory Board should be? Because I think there is a discussion that has to be had, because obviously, there isn't a formalized, this is what we want you to do, this is what we don't want you to do, other than the ten-year plan, which we know that you guys are far more involved in that. So, again, I think this goes back to that structural question that was brought up of what do we, what is the relationship? And I guess my question would be, is have you all thought about what you believe the relationship should be?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think, I appreciate your sentiment, Councilmember Pretty. But I would say, you know, we know, we're not sitting around waiting for something to do. We know what we want to do. We see ourselves as advocates for the parks and the sports and the programming and the recreation that the city should be very proud of. We have a lot to be proud of. But what we want to be a part of is a more collaborative process around meeting the goals that have been put forward, such as, was referenced earlier, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, that says that if we want to continue to offer the same level of service and have equitable access to parks across the city, that we will add sixty-two acres of parkland to Roanoke City's portfolio by 2034. What is the plan to do that? How are we going to get there? We support that. We want to know from you, how can we work with you to do that? We do a lot of amazing things in this city with frankly, not a high level of investment per capita with regard to our park spending. Parks and Rec put out some really incredible statistics recently outlining all of the, what we should, again, be proud of in terms of our per capita access to parkland by acreage, things like that. But one of the things that stood out to me was that if you compare us to similar municipalities and jurisdictions, we invest, I think it's two percent per capita, whereas our colleague municipalities are investing five or six percent per capita towards their parks. So, we want to advocate for that, for more funding for our park systems, for increased green space, for more recreation and programming, after-school programming, things like that. So, we know, I think, what we want to advocate for and see ourselves as advocates for the parks.
So, just thinking out loud here, would it be good for somebody on council, say, Mr. Pretty, and somebody on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to work on what that code change would look like, so that we can start to move that forward? I mean, I don't think that's something we can do tonight. But I think working together, having somebody moving that forward, I think would be helpful, because, you know, obviously, there's an issue here. I will say, in my time on the Parks and Rec Board, it was reported to us multiple times that codification was being considered and developed in some form, but nothing was ever brought to us for consideration or submitted to council.
I have a question, a question about the codification. Will that form a structure of communication and of responsibility for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
If we follow the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, I don't believe particularly so. I don't know if that's a question for protocol otherwise.
Well, I'm sitting here thinking that, you know, I think what we really need is a structure or a process to communicate with the city council, so that we understand what you're going to need and what we need to provide you. But I think that's our confusion right now.
What I would personally prefer, on top of updating the Parks and Rec Master Plan, is that when something comes before us that involves parks, and we believe that there's adequate input that's sought, even from citizens as a clearinghouse, that we refer that to your board for a recommendation, and that your board go out into the community, involving, much like this community meeting was, but then to take formal action that is sent back up to council with a recommendation, much like we have a planning commission or zoning matters, that they send recommendations, and council can take whatever matter they feel is appropriate based on that. But I think that the impetus should come from us to say what we're seeking input on, because otherwise, you will continue to find the things in your community that you advocate for. And if you want input on things that we're not giving you, say, we want to have input on this.
I think another thing that we need to all understand is we serve the citizens of the city. And because of that, we need to communicate better with each other about what their needs are and their concerns are. I would like to see that emphasized more and more to make us more viable in what we do.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add one short comment to what he just said, is in a timely manner. I'm a newcomer to the board, but just in the three meetings that I've been to, the magnitude of the things that have come before us have been very, very impactful for the community. And we've not had enough time to really study them, you know, because it just seems like to me that all of a sudden, we're losing the historic house and we're getting a pool. And, you know, these things coming at us, and the coffee house in the park, you know, that. So, those things came, I felt they came very fast, with not enough time to make, have any meaningful input. So...
Well, thank you for, I'm sorry.
I feel like we're kind of still swimming. I'd like, and I guess I want to ask the city attorney, there's a very clear purpose on the website about the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I mean, it outlines very thoroughly what your role is. It seems to me that where you have clarity, and if we codify it, it includes like, things like how often you report back, when you're consulted on decisions, what the forms of communication are. I think all of those can be specified, but I don't think we're equipped tonight to do that work. And I think it would be great to hear from you all how you envision that work taking place, and then work on a draft that we can then. And another thing that's really important, if we codify this, let's make sure that it's aligned with other boards and commissions. Because one of the things we're running into is, well, this one thing applies to this group, and another thing applies to another group, and there's not an alignment. And the last thing I'll say is, I want to make sure that we, as a council, appropriately equip you for this work. I think sometimes we neglect our responsibility when we don't fully understand what we're appointing you to. We need to be clear in what we're asking you to do, and make sure that it's either us or staff that's appropriately orienting you. I don't know how many of our boards and commissions actually get a regular orientation. Or when you come onto a commission, do you go through an orientation session about what it means to be on this board or commission? I think that's a missing piece that we need to add. And I'm not sure whose role that is, because we work very closely with city staff, and staff often are the liaison and facilitate the work of the boards and commissions. So, those are some things that I would recommend that we just, we work to finalize, and maybe working on a draft is a way to start that. And not a draft that takes three years to do, but something we can, you know, have a time run on to get accomplished.
Mayor Lee, may I make a recommendation so we can move on from this particular point in the agenda? I would like to volunteer myself for some kind of ad hoc committee, hopefully with the city attorney, the chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, hopefully Director Clark and the city manager where appropriate. If there are any other members of council who want to participate, I think at most, one other, in drafting something to be offered for this council to consider, whether or not that's amended or what form it comes in.
Well, I'm not sure how much we should load this with council members on that board, because if you do, it'd be, possibly would be considered as council-driven, not driven by the citizens that serve on the board.
Mayor Lee, I'm only requesting, well, no, not for council members to be on the board. I'm making this recommendation as someone who has both served on the board and dealt with the frustration on that end, and also understood what it's like on the end of council, having to then reply or not reply to this particular board and with what their responsibilities are. I would expect that this codification would look largely like the resolution that already is in existence with which the authority by which they're operating. But to help formalize not only that, but to come up with some mechanism that we could address some of the concerns that have been brought up here today, so that both this current board can get back to their primary responsibilities and future boards won't run into the same problems that past ones have.
Well, this is just my opinion. I understand, but I think that could be done more... I understand, but I think that could be done more so with city staff. I just, I'm just kind of concerned with council being a part of boards and committees, especially those that are making decisions and making recommendations as a part of council. And I don't want to get too far in there, and I think the city administration can give them more guidance, a lot of guidance, because, and I question if we should be doing that anyway in terms of council sitting on a, a advisory board or committee. That should be the board, and I think the city administration should help them in terms of preparing and coming, like other committees. This is my thought.
But Mayor Lee, I understand your concern, and I was only offering for an ad hoc basis for help of the development of this, but as your feedback was, if the Parks and Rec Board and city staff can work to come up with some kind of codification, then I'll wait to offer my input until it comes before the council to vote on.
That's what I'd like to do, that, I think, is what we could do.
Yes, sir. That sounds good. I know we're at time, so we'll say thank you for, again, for having us. I know you have your gains for a meeting, so unless anyone else has anything, or Director Clark, do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I think you gave, unless you want to give a timeline on the master plan, obviously, the next biggest thing that the board is working on is the update for the master plan. We're halfway through the current master plan, so it's time to kind of update that. Michael has kind of alluded to, it's in procurement, and I think at least providing kind of a sense of the timeline for that will help everybody because that's going to factor directly into the conversation you've had because that's the one document that you have the most influence on, that is a, ultimately, a policy recommendation to council. Now, it is also, by necessity, fiscally constrained in that it's got to propose what is reasonable to be able to accomplish with funding over the next 10 years. But that probably is the most significant thing that you all work on every five years or so, so timeline-wise.
So, we are looking to get this done within fiscal '24, so hopefully come back to some type of adoption from you all in May or June of 2024. Five-year updates to 10-year comp plans are meant to serve as a course correction, so to speak, just only because recreational trends change so much, and it's to make sure that the projects that we've already completed and the things that we have planned are still what our citizens want to, to see and want to participate in. So, just like the master plan before, we'll have a series of engagement meetings that we will schedule out in the various communities and the individual neighborhoods, and then we'll update with a statistically valid survey. It won't be as comprehensive as the 10-year documents. We won't go to every single park and do a facility analysis like we did before. This is more just updating the needs assessment to make sure that we're on track.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'm going to lean to you now in terms of, I think we recovered basically what you'd like to cover tonight in the short time period we had.
Yeah, I think so. We appreciate it. Does anyone else have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your attention. I think you answered your time. But at the council's request, this, this will be a standing meeting each year, so there will be now, going forward, a joint meeting of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the council, as you all have done with other boards and commissions. So, doesn't necessarily mean it's always going to fall in June or July. We'll work that schedule out each year, but there isn't, will be at least one annual meeting jointly held between the two.
That's great. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to call on the chair. Now, the chair, you have to adjourn this meeting of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous, adjourned.
Thank you, sir. All right, council will be in recess for about five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is a public hearing. Fifteen one is requests Roanoke City School Board to resume a portion of property located at thirty-one forty-two Preston Avenue. That has been postponed by the Planning Commission and it will be continued Monday, August fourteenth at one-thirty here in the council chamber. So therefore, we do not have any jurisdiction. The hearing is mounted at this time because it has not been through the Planning Commission.
Mayor Lee, may I ask a question? When would that bring it back to us for a public hearing?
Public hearing?
Yeah.
August fourteenth.
Oh, us on August fourteenth. The Planning Commission's can...
The Planning Commission's on August fourteenth.
Your second meeting in August.
In August.
No, in August.
August, so.
Second meeting in August.
The twenty-first then, okay.
Twenty-first, I'm sorry.
All right, everybody clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to vacate a drainage easement located across official tax map, tax map, number sixty-two-one-one-oh-three, and authorize the acceptance of a viable with-storm drain easement. There's one measure which is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the appropriate documents to vacate and release a portion of an existing fifteen-foot storm drain easement held by the city of Roanoke across real property owned by Roanoke Electric Steel Corporation, doing business as Steel Dynamics, Inc., bearing Roanoke official tax map number six-oh-two-one-one-oh-three, located at one-oh-two West Side Boulevard Northwest, unto owner, at the request of owner, and to accept on behalf of the city from owner the conveyance of a viable with-storm drain easement across the property to city to replace the portion of the storm drain easement being vacated and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. I'm going to recognize the city manager for any comments you'd like to have.
Nothing that's not already identified in the, in the reports. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing and I'm going to ask our clerk, has any citizens signed up to be heard?
No, sir.
Okay. So therefore, I'll close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments, thoughts on this. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please follow along.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number three is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to vacate a public utility easement located across official tax map, map, number seventy-one-ten-one-twenty-eight. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the appropriate documents to vacate and release an existing fifteen-foot public utility easement held by the city of Roanoke across real property owned by the, the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors, bearing Roanoke official tax map number seven-one-one-oh-one-two-eight, located adjacent to Mexico Way, unto owner, at the request of owner to accommodate owner's development of the property and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. I again want to recognize our city manager for any comments he'd like to make.
Only thing I'd say in this is the approval, I think, will make a couple of Roanoke County firefighters in the back quite happy, so. That's all I'll say.
Okay. I want to open the public hearing now and Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up to speak on this matter?
No, sir.
All right. Since there are no citizens, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number four is authorization for FY twenty-twenty-four bond issuance and appropriation of funds for capital projects. There are two measures versus a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed thirty-seven million, two-hundred-fifty-five thousand dollars aggregate principal amount of general obligations of the city of Roanoke, Virginia, in the form of general obligation public improvement bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, improvement, extension, enlargement, and equipping of various public improvement projects of and for the city, including related design and architectural and engineering services, fixing the form, domination, and certain other details of such bonds, and otherwise providing with respect to the issuance, sale, and delivery of such bonds, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of a like-principle amount of general obligation public improvement bond anticipation notes and anticipation of the issuance and sale of such bonds.
Thank you. Please to recognize the city manager for any comments.
This is really the action necessary so that we can issue the debt for the CIP that was approved with the most recent budget. These are for school projects as well as city projects. For anyone that is interested in what those projects are, there's, there's two ways that they can find that out. One of those is inside the approved budget, of course, is the list of capital projects. And actually, in this agenda packet, which is available online, it lists all of those projects. Obviously, I'm not going to go through all those because there's many of them, but it gives the dollar amount that's associated with those as well as a description of the project. There's more detail in the budget for, for those items also. And this is only the debt-funded portion of the capital. Obviously, grant or cash-funded portions are funded in other ways associated with it. And again, the request is for the thirty-five-point-eight million dollars of debt that's necessary to implement the, the FY twenty-four list of projects that came from capital. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, are there any citizens signed up to speak on this matter?
Um, no, sir. There's, no, sir.
Okay. All right. With that being said, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions.
Just a quick question. It's making, none of these totals have changed.
That, that is correct, yes. Now, whether the cost estimates will end up being as we had anticipated when we put together the budget, don't know. But in terms of what we're able to issue in debt, that has not changed.
Right.
All right, any other questions or comment? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding to be provided by the issuance of general obligation bonds to projects for the following areas: storm water management, civic center, citywide curb, gutter, sidewalk, streets, parks, and recreation master plan, fleet capital replacements, technology capital improvements, bridge renovations, schools maintenance and improvements, amending and reedating cer- certain sections of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four storm water utility, civic center, capital projects, and school capital projects funds, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any discussion? Let me look at the council. Hearing none, and Madam Clerk, you may call the row, please.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number sixteen is the adoption of the historic Gainsborough Community Hub Concept Plan. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution approving the historic Gainsborough Community Hub Concept Plan.
Is that it?
That's it. That's it.
Uh, did anybody sign up to speak on that?
No, sir, not on that matter.
On Gainsborough?
Oh, Gainsborough. I'm sorry. You're right. I thought all of these were going to the hearing of citizens, but there are some Gainsborough folks here. Yes.
Are they signed up to speak?
Yes, they are signed up to speak. Okay, um, do we go ahead and call?
Yeah, call them in or what did they sign up?
Okay, our first speaker, Jordan Bell.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of Roanoke City Council and city staff. I am here to speak about the, the Gainsborough Hub adoption and many citizens in the audiences as well. I wanted to come and speak to you about the history of Gainsborough to make sure that the folks in Gainsborough and throughout the city are the ones benefiting not only the, the view of the Gainsborough Hub, but the economic development and growth of the Gainsborough Hub, that the people in the community benefit from that. I am here in honor of Margaret and Alice Roberts, Evelyn Bethel and Helen Davis, two sets of sisters that fought for Gainsborough each and every day. In nineteen fifty-five, the destruction of the black community in Roanoke was put into place by Roanoke City Council. I have a, uh, found this at the library, a redevelopment plan for the Commonwealth Redevelopment Project in the northeast section of the city of Roanoke nineteen fifty-five, adopted by Roanoke City Council. Whereas the extensive surveys by the city of Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority in a Commonwealth Redevelopment Project area conducted in August nineteen fifty-three have disclosed, among other things, the following facts: that eighty-three-point-five acres, which is predominantly residential, but contain some commercial uses and vacant land of the four-hundred-and-thirty-eight residential structures within the project area, seventy-six of substandard, two-hundred-and-forty-eight of which are in a complete dilapidated stage. This resolution started the destruction of one-thousand homes, over two-hundred businesses, nearly ten churches and schools that many of the people in the audience grew up in. The Gainsborough Hub is a wonderful concept, but the benefit of the Gainsborough Hub is the real important issue that we stand tonight from. The Civic Center, Hotel Roanoke, Magic City Ford, the post office, McDonald's, Domino's Pizza, just to name a few things and institutions and businesses that have benefited from urban renewal. But the people in the audience who live, work, and go to church have not benefited from that, from that renewal. Reverend Charles Green, uh, former leader of the Roanoke Branch NAACP, said Gainsborough, urban renewal to Gainsborough is like blowing up Mill Mountain. Just sit with that. Reverend Charles Green said like, urban renewal to Gainsborough is like blowing up Mill Mountain. So the Gainsborough Hub is a very important, and I'll briefly, a very important idea that if the folks who live in Gainsborough, who grew up in Gainsborough, who went to get the haircut and went to Dr. Clayder and went to school and went to church in Gainsborough, those folks do not benefit from the Gainsborough Hub. If my generation does not benefit from the Gainsborough Hub, then the idea of the Gainsborough Hub really has no value to it. So as I take my seat, I'm just hoping that if the adoption of the Gainsborough Hub passes, that Roanoke City Council and Roanoke City leaders, which you have already been doing, I'm not going to sit here and say that you all have not already been involved in the community with making sure that we at least have a seat at the table, that if the folks in the Gainsborough community do not economically benefit from the Gainsborough Hub, then the Gainsborough Hub idea really has no value to it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jerome Hayden.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
City Manager, Kowell, Mayor Lee, and city council members. I am representing a group of concerned citizens of Gainsborough. My brother and I, as well as several cousins, own our family home, which is located on Gilmer Avenue Northeast in the historic Gainsborough neighborhood in Roanoke. My grandfather purchased this home on July the fifteenth, nineteen twenty-eight. I was born in our home, grew up in the Gainsborough neighborhood, and attended Roanoke City Schools. As a child from the backyard of my grandfather's home, I could and still can view and see the historic Hotel Roanoke. Across Jefferson Street, from Hotel Roanoke to High Education Center, stands as a monument to the collaboration between colleges, state agencies, universities, Norfolk-Sudham Railway, and a list of other organizations. Unfortunately, adjacent to the High Education Center are two buildings and two small plots of land, which are the last remaining vestiges of Henry Street, which was an extremely important economic center for African-Americans. As most of you know, Henry Street was stripped of its businesses during urban renewal. Henry Street has received some attention since urban renewal. A statue of Martin Luther King stands at the top of the pedestrian bridge that connects downtown Roanoke to Henry Street. The historic Dumas Hotel stands and the Strand Theater, which was renovated and to the Clark Moore Complex still exists. The city of Roanoke has never seriously reconciled the damage that was done to the African-American community to urban renewal. The concerned citizens are asking that the American Rescue Plan Act Fund be used in historic Gainsborough to create a viable economic African-American presence on Henry Street, improve the housing in the historic neighborhood that borders the Hotel Roanoke Conference Center and the Gainsborough Library. Also, create a green space such as a small park because studies have shown parks can improve the health of people in urban settings. And last but not least, let's not forget that the historic Gainsborough neighborhood of Roanoke is the birthplace of the entire city of Roanoke. It is parallel to the downtown area of the Roanoke and has a historic information that needs to be shared with our citizens as well as our visiting tourists. On the website, Roanoke Regional Partnership, one of the statements that Roanoke City uses to describe itself is the following sentence: "The city has a healthy local economy, a vibrant greater downtown, strong neighborhoods, and offers quality services to the citizens and visitors." If this is a true statement, we, the concerned citizens of Gainsborough, would like the Roanoke City officials to contemplate the following question: Why have no collaborative efforts been initiated to make this important historic neighborhood an inviting tourist attraction and a strong neighborhood in the city of Roanoke? Before I take my seat, I want to honor the efforts and accomplishments of two dedicated Gainsborough citizens of Roanoke, the late Helen Davis and her sister, the late Evelyn Bethel, who lived in the historic Gainsborough neighborhood and had the energy, tenacity, and over-wavering commitment to ensure the historic preservation of Gilmer Avenue Northeast and Patton Avenue Northeast. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ricardo Stovall.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I come before you this evening as a concerned property owner in historic Gainsborough. Gainsborough was founded in the mid-seventeen hundreds. The first settlement was absorbed in Big Lick in eighteen seventy-four. And Big Lick was incorporated as Roanoke in eighteen eighty-two. By the nineteen twenties, the area was a self-sufficient, prominent black neighborhood with black professionals, businesses, located in a commercial hub on Gainsborough Road, Henry Street, and the first block of Gilmer. Surrounded by residential development, churches, civic establishments, the neighborhood was prosperous and active in social, cultural, and educational crusades of the times. Until the nineteen sixties, this area was Roanoke's self-contained black community. Countless black businesses were there. I was in the last class to attend Gainsborough Elementary before it was terminated. The house I own now at nine Patton Avenue was built in nineteen twenty-five. It is believed to be the first house blacks moved into in Gainsborough. Henry Street was Roanoke's Black Wall Street. In concluding, we can't bring back or recreate the past, but I strongly agree that the Gainsborough Hub Plan presented is a great step in bringing the area to a thriving residential business community that the residents and the city would be proud of. I also think this hub plan should be in partnership with the residents of Gainsborough and the city where input from both sides are discussed together before going forth with the various parts and actions within the plan. This way, trust and accountability will be established. I would also like to see smaller projects getting started now, like street lighting, safer ways for traffic to move through the area, green spaces for small parks developed, the proposal for the cul-de-sac small amphitheater stage across from the Gainsborough Library, and a community center where citizens, senior citizens, and adults can gather for events and learn about their past. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Anita Wilson.
The city manager, mayor, and the council members. I am Anita Deckardt Wilson. I was born in the Gainsborough historical era in nineteen thirty-eight, eighty-five years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
As concerned citizens, we are... As concerned citizens, we are excited tonight about this plan to revitalize the Gainsborough community and to provide equity for people who have roots in the neighborhood to become ambassadors in that area again. We need to build trust with each other to show genuine interest for rebuilding the African American community by integrating the proposed hub neighborhood plan in an area which once was self-sufficient. My father came to Roanoke from South Carolina during the growth of Magic City. He purchased our home during the expansion of the Norfolk and Western Railroad, Hotel Roanoke, and the Silk Mill. This historic Gainsborough grew into a self-sufficient area, and my father did get a job at the Visco Silk Mill. He worked there. His two brothers came with him, and one worked at Norfolk and Southern, and the other one worked at Silk Mill also. So, we have, our family just, they came to Roanoke because they lived on a plantation, and they came for economic reason. And he was the youngest son, and he bought a house at an early age. This is the oldest African American neighborhood in Roanoke, the place where Roanoke was chartered, the place where Big Lick became Old Lick. We could walk to school, we could walk to church. We also walked across the railroad track to A&amp;P, to Cressis, and to F.W. Woodward, to the Fresh Market. We had our own mall, Commonwealth, on Commonwealth Street, everything. We had our own mall. We had our doctor's office, pharmacy, American Auditorium, the train station, shoe shop, cleaners, the Roanoke Tribune, real estate, insurance, beauty shops, theater, clubs, Dumas Hotel, and that's, that just name a few of them, just a few of them. We know we can't go back in time. And this is a new season, I'm sorry, but we truly want to see this area rehabilitated to enhance and provide equity for people in the historical Gainsborough community to become ambassadors once again. Let's make this area safe for pedestrians, eliminate the image of a decaying community, provide health care, places for businesses, educational opportunities, a daycare for senior citizens, and a recreational area. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Frederick Gussler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Frederick Gussler. Here on behalf of the Roanoke Redevelopment Housing Authority, I'll take a second to thank Vice Mayor Cobb for attending the APA, the Virginia American Planning Association Conference this morning, and also City Manager and Councilwoman Vlassen also did our opening remarks and welcome, and quite timely on this subject we're on, since some of the opening remarks related to the healing needed from urban renewal and such. We, at Housing Authority, were not commenting on the specific Gainsborough Hub Plan. We did have a staff person involved with the ARPA funds process, I believe that was a couple summers ago when that started. We know there's been discussion recently of people wanting more or something different. So, we don't have, not going to have any specific comments on that tonight. If the community is supportive of it, then I think that's great, you know, and we would support whatever the city and the Gainsborough neighborhood want to do. I do want to bring back to your attention something that our board, the last Board of Commissioners, the Housing Authority and City Council, led off with in their intro, was about the property that we own in what's called Cherry Hill, which is along Orange Avenue and Cherry Avenue in the Gainsborough neighborhoods. Seventy-seven parcels, over eight acres, and they've sat vacant for years. We have not, there's been several talks over these years recently about doing something with those properties. Nothing specific has come about. More recently, we have had a couple talks just preliminarily with developers. We've not gotten any proposals, therefore we've not shared anything publicly, because there's been, well, nothing to share. So, we, of course, would do that when the time came. These properties, many of them were acquired with city, community development block grant funds. And the Gainsborough Neighborhood Plan, the Gainsborough Redevelopment Plan, rather, that was an urban renewal plan, that still remains in effect. Somebody may remember years ago, the Housing Authority wanted to close the plan due to this change in state law, and the community was against that. So, really, it's our intent, we've been taking some small steps, and we may take greater steps towards marketing that property for development of affordable housing. It has never fit in any of our programming with the funds, the public funds that we get from Department of Housing and Urban Development to do any development there, and there's been discussions otherwise with the city over the years. But, thank you.
I have two speakers. I'm not sure what the issues may be. Dr. Hale, is it yours on the next one? Okay, and Richard Norman. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. You just have a statement here. So, that's all the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion by members of council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the stakeholders that participated in the meetings. I understand they had four or five meetings, and thirty, forty people would show up. I just want to say thank you. It really makes me feel good that you all are in favor, and, you know, this council has given you the opportunity to participate. I know a lot of times we get complaints that we don't allow the citizens to engage, and I hope that you feel like we have given you the opportunity. I want you to also know that you will still have opportunities. If you haven't had an opportunity to engage in the plan so far, I know that it's a decent plan, but I know that there's some tweaking that needs to be done, and I know that we will all work together to do that, because I think we all want a positive outcome for the Gainsborough neighborhood, and so I'm looking forward to working with you all. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Leffwich for facilitating those meetings and for all of you that came out, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. I just echo what Councilwoman White Boyd said. Thank you all for your passion and for reminding us that whatever is done here needs to benefit the people who live and work in Gainsborough. That's, we need to be reminded of that. Jordan kind of started reminding us of what was removed, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate the information that was shared by the Historic Gainsborough Preservation District H2 regarding making sure that we address housing, not just building new housing, but helping rehabilitate existing homes and making sure. I think we've also heard that while we need, we want to make sure these are affordable homes. I think it was Ms. Wilson who said that her dad was able, was it your dad or grandfather?
Dad.
Dad was able to purchase a home at a young age, and one of the challenges we're seeing nationally is particularly for African American families, that because of the income gap and the wealth gap, access to capital has been very limited, and historically, it's been thwarted through policy. And so, I think that we have a legacy of people being able, whatever the color of our skin, to be able to purchase a home is absolutely and critically important as we think about bringing forward this, what I think the potential of this plan is. I just don't want to forget the housing piece of that, because there's a lot of empty land because there used to be houses there. There's a lot of empty land because there used to be businesses there. And everything that we've heard tonight is about replenishing and bringing all of that back to life in a new way while honoring the history of what was there. So, I'm excited about this plan. I just want to make sure that we continue to work with citizens and stay very engaged in that process, and staff has already modeled a good plan for that. So, let's continue to do that, and this is a very exciting part of our future.
All right, Ms. Moon.
Mr. Mayor, I have to stand up because I can't see the people over the podium being short as I am, so I got to stand up, so they can see me and I can see them. I do want to thank you all for coming and being part of the Gainsborough area growing up in Northwest. My mom moved here in nineteen fifty-eight, and we've been here since then, and she was one of those that loved Henry Street. And my husband, Earl Reynolds' father, had a barbershop up on Henry Street, so I've heard a lot about Henry Street and used to want to be a part of that growing up, always envisioned going up to Henry Street, even walked with a friend of mine nineteen seventy-seven. When we used to come to the city to go to work, we had to come the old way past the Shanty Shacks, the whole bit where there used to be the fork, and turn before they put in the new road. So, I do understand, and I'm happy that you all support the plan. I had talked to several people in the community, wanted to make sure, because I am community-driven, and I did not find any negative, which was good, and I do like the concept. The only thing I do ask, and this is on behalf of those I talked with, is that the city won't wait forever, ten years from now, to make the concept plan a reality, that there will be a framework, a plan that can be shared with the community in the near future at some point, and again, not keep them waiting with their hopes up, and then along comes five years from now, the whole plan changes. So, I do hope that the city will take in consideration suggestions that were made by the speakers and see what we can do. I know there was concern with regards to priority number three, not wanting to wait on the residential piece, that they would like to see that moved forward with the housing aspect of it. So, I hope we can make some of this happen. Thank you.
All right, in conclusion then, let me...
You go ahead, and I have something at the end, so.
Oh, okay.
You go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. I just want to say, to concur with the remarks that were made by my colleagues, and let me say that we're fully committed to making this concept a reality, and the city administration is also, and I think that's a good thing. So, we'll be working, and I don't think, I don't like to say what time, but I think they're committed, and I think that commitment means a lot to me and what we're doing. So, thank you all for coming out tonight and being a part of that, and know that the city is committed to making this concept a reality. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank also the residents of Gainsborough, many of who have spoken here, for their work on this as well, and their patience with us, also for the council, because this has taken a little bit of time to allow, to get to this point, so certainly want to acknowledge that. We will continue, as Wayne has been doing as recently as, I think, a week ago, we will continue to engage with the residents as this plan gets implemented. I also want to thank Wayne for the work that he has done on getting us to this point with it. And Ms. Moon Reynolds, to your point, it won't take ten years, because we don't have ten years to spend the money that we have, so we have, so one of the things I do want to, I think, I think I hear this already, but I do want to sort of say it out loud so that we can receive the concurrence that's necessary. So, as you all know, we have currently two primary sources of funding out here to be able to implement this plan. One of them is relatively small, which is the DHDC grant that actually helped pay for this study, but still has some funds left as well. So, obviously, we'll be using that immediately to begin implementing this plan. The other, of course, is the five million dollars that we have designated for the Gainsborough Hub for ARPA. And what I want to make certain is, as you all know, the Star City Strong Advisory Panel made recommendations on how those dollars should be used across the entire city for ARPA. In this particular area, they were very specific about health and wellness and supporting entrepreneurship, particularly minority-owned businesses, and we don't want to take that option, those options away, but I do want to make sure that everyone is comfortable with adding in some of the options that you've heard this evening and that are in the plan, and those include using some of the funding for outdoor public gathering and recreation spaces, infrastructure and safety improvements, particularly on Gainsborough Road, and then owner-occupied housing rehabilitation and repair grants, particularly in the historic district. So, just want to make certain that everyone on council is comfortable that I don't, we're not, again, moving away from what came out of the advisory panel, but we're adding to it so that we have a broader spectrum of opportunities. And again, as you all know, we have to have those dollars committed by the end, by December of twenty twenty-four, and fully spent by December of twenty twenty-six. So, that's kind of the timeframe we have for these dollars, and of course, then we'll continue to work with council on securing funds, not only to implement this hub, but all of the neighborhood center plans that we have recently adopted. So, as long as you all are comfortable with the expansion of that scope, that's how we'll actually proceed forward in using those ARPA dollars in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And that's important for you to remember. We got to twenty twenty-four to spend a lot of this, and also, when we had the Advisory Council, which was chaired by, matter of fact, Ms. Trish White Boyd and I were on that committee, and it was thirty-six citizens in the community that came forward, and they all agreed when we got this pool of money, we were going to engage the community, not go behind closed doors and make decisions, but we brought them out, and they asked them, and we asked them, "How do you think we should spend the money?" And they said, "To make sure we cover the Gainsborough area." Let's look at Gainsborough, and that was a proud moment for me, because it was a cross-section of doctors, lawyers. Yeah, a number of people that were there, and they could have went in many directions with this, but the focus was to lift up Gainsborough. And so, we got those march over. That says something about the commitment of this city. That's why I'm proud to be the mayor of this city. And so, we heard that, we're doing that, the concept is here, and we got a timeline on spending money, and hopefully, we'll be able to get more money to sustain this. But, I'm confident that we can get this done, and I'm confident of the commitment by this city. And we're going to be very transparent to keep you engaged on what we're doing. And this is not that, I tell people all the time, we look back, this is not the council back that did the urban renewal and all of that. This is the different council that's committed to making this happen. So, rest assured of that, and I'm excited, as Vice Mayor said, about this and what we're going to do. So, again, thank you all for coming, and I'm going to now ask for the vote, and I'll ask the city clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Pritty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Vlassen.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
And unanimous vote, aye. So, thank you. All right, our work continues. We're down to item number seventeen now, hearing of citizens upon public matters. Are there any citizens signed up?
Yes, sir, we have a number of citizens.
Okay.
Ms. Dr. Brenda Hale will come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank everybody that spoke. I see we're clearing the house out real quick. But, I'm here to speak of something very important. I'm only one person, but I need to be in about six places in the course of one day. So, I missed some things, but the one thing... So I missed some things, but the one thing that I want to talk about tonight is Tom Kane. I know citizens and city council members, the mayor, you're very familiar with the name Tom Kane. Tom Kane was an executive committee member of the Roanoke Branch NAACP and Economic Development Chair. I had the good sense to appoint him that. Six years Tom Kane worked on the Evan Springs project, six years. And this work was within partnership with Virginia Tech and it was also appearing right here in this chamber more than six times. The documentation is here of his work that he spent six years putting together. And, and this is in regards to the wetlands, this is in regards to Evan Springs. Now, what I would ask you to do is clearly look at that work because it's here. And the, a lot of people, when I say botanical garden, they say, we never heard about that. Tom talked about botanical gardens the whole entire six years. And why did he talk about this? Number one, it preserved the topography. Once you cap over the wetlands, and that's what American natives called that, the wetlands, and once you destroy it, you cannot get it back. Also, destination. We have so many areas in Roanoke, Virginia that are destinations. Mill Mountain's a destination. The Tabah Museum is a destination. The Harrison Museum of African-American Culture, a destination. That could be a destination just like in so many other cities. Botanical garden. Economic impact. From the very beginning, we stood here and said, this will give jobs to our African-American citizens in Northwest, other than a fast food restaurant. Quality jobs, jobs that can educate and teach young people to go in a different direction, something that they never even considered before. And I implore you again, because I see my orange and red is coming up on me fast, but the thing is, I want to be obedient, but the thing is, I can only implore you to please, see, it got me, please, look at Tom Kane's work that he spent six years of his life doing and died. I died, I was at his bedside when he died. Please don't let the work die. So folks, this is just an opportunity to evaluate that. That's all I can ask you to do. Please reevaluate it. And I thank you so much and I'm just so proud of these young folks. We had multi-generations speaking up here tonight. That's a good thing.
Mr. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Richard Norman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I feel a little overwhelmed that I had so many elegant speakers before me, but one element she said really is true. Once you pave over that green space, it's gone forever. Recently, I had to drive from Hollins College into Roanoke on Williamson Road. That whole way is almost totally paved over with asphalt and most of it is not being used. It's just empty space. The only function it's having is, is attract, is absorbing the heat of the sun, which makes that environment entirely unpleasant for anybody who's around it. So if you do that with Evan Springs, what you're doing, what city managers call, is creating a heat sink island. That asphalt, that concrete, all day long will absorb the sun's heat and make that area hotter for all the residents near there. But the other part of that is, when nighttime comes, instead of nature doing its natural process of cooling that area off, what happens is all that heat that's been stored in the concrete and asphalt will come back out again and just make this space, keep the space hot all day long and all night long. So, you know, one of the reasons I moved to Roanoke almost 30 years ago was because there was so much green space in Roanoke. And I implore you to please maintain that space, leave it green. It's more valuable as a green space. Somebody else mentioned today, there's been plenty of reports in the newspaper about how green spaces, people who live near green spaces are calmer, there's less violence, there's less crime because of the calmness of nature. So there's no need to develop that. You've got an empty space across, much of Valadue is empty now. And that's just, why can't that be reused? So anyways, I would ask you to look at the value, the real value of that green space rather than what the developers might be telling you. Oh, I've heard somebody say there's going to be 27,000 more cars being used there. Do you really need 27,000 more visits a day and all that pollution this generating that we know, I should hope we all know by now, it's not good for us, it's not good for the planet and it's just, it just creates an undesirable environment. Thank you.
The next speaker is Richard Fife.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, other distinguished members of council and the city leadership and leadership team and staff. My name is Richard Fife and I've come to speak to you on behalf of the Friends of Evan Spring, I think to compliment the two previous speakers who've appeared tonight. First, I want you to hear how much we appreciate you all are doing for the city. It's unbelievable the complications of many of the issues you have to deal with, such as what we are just hearing about trying to sort out the parks and recreation situation. So thank you for that. Commit you too for your leadership over the past few years where we, the city, have had to deal with some incredible challenges like the COVID pandemic. So this is a tough task and we appreciate your help and leadership for the city in that. I need to say though, that I and we are not happy with the basic design of the process that we're using to determine the future of Evan Springs. We think that there is a basic flaw in the design and by pursuing it as we're doing, we risk sabotaging much of the good work we've done and the good things that we hope to do. The problem with the design originates with the fundamental assumption in the 2030 Evan Springs Area Plan, which argues that the highest and best use, in a sense, the only use for Evan Springs is that it be developed in a multi-use pattern, which that kind of a site focuses on a combination of intense commercial development, new residential construction, and in our case would allow for some preservation of the wetlands and natural area. That's just one component of that. The city and we, the citizens of the city, are being forced to choose between options which decide which best mixed-use pattern we want. We want to say we don't want any of that. We believe there is another and a more viable option, which draws on the wealth of the local community's knowledge and makes use of scientific studies of the past decade that stress the importance of protecting the wetlands and preserving the tree canopy and encouraging commercial development elsewhere in the city, particularly, we would say, in Northwest Roanoke. To that end, we want to ask you two things, to do two things. Please suspend the current process long enough to give us time to gather and make use of information that professionals are generating, who are studying this area and understand much better the environmental, economic, and health impacts of a development, the commercial development in Evan Springs. And two, remove or suspend the development-only assumption of the Evan Springs Area Plan, which would open up this conversation that we want to have so that we could really pursue and have a good conversation about it. We all want to come up with a plan that helps make Roanoke an even better place and protects the interests and addresses the concerns of the citizens most directly affected by an Evan Springs development. We believe that pursuing this course will give the city the best chance to create that better future that we seek and that it will restore a measure of trust between so many of our citizens who have felt let down or betrayed by the city and the city's leadership in the past. Please give us that chance. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tricia Willhite.
She must have left.
Okay. Move on to the next speaker, Teresa Gill Walker.
I'm gonna be quick because I know y'all tired and hungry, just like me. My name is Teresa Gill Walker. I am a resident of Roanoke, Virginia, living in Northwest neighborhood. So I just had a few things to reiterate as we continue our collaboration and working together regarding Evan Springs. We have heard time and time again that this development is going to happen. We've heard it from the consultants hired by the city at their presentation to the city council. The mayor asked if no development was actually an option. You were told, no, with no hesitation, that development will happen. Now we know the city can take the land to make development happen. It's happened to blacks here in Roanoke time and time again. The Roanoke Civic Center 581 are the most vivid examples and the impact on the black community is still felt. We understand that this type of infrastructure can benefit our city, but we also understand that green space is critical infrastructure. You were told that there is a no-development option. We know there are options to ensure Evan Springs is preserved, for example, eminent domain. Why can't we use the same taking power used in the past to hurt the black community to now preserve this green space as critical infrastructure? I would like to reiterate, I request that the development decision timetable be extended for all viable alternatives to be studied and explored. The citizens of Northwest Roanoke are asking the city to take seriously their commitment to repair our community from the damage of urban renewal. Thank you for your consideration. Y'all have a great, safe evening and the rest of the week.
The next speaker, Stephen Naupke.
I'm here primarily for two reasons. The first is to speak on behalf of Evan Springs and the second is because I believe that you'll listen to me. When I look across the room, I recognize the fact that I know most of you fairly well. I know what your political campaigns were about, I know what your hearts are all about, and I believe that you share the values that Evan Springs is addressing. When we highlight the fact that when it comes to the issues of protecting the environment, establishing trust across the city and improving the health of our citizens, there is no value conflict. So we, the members of Evan Springs, Friends of Evan Springs, want to see Evan Springs preserved as a green space and nature park to protect the urban heat island as outlined in your climate action plan, chapter two. We want to see Evan Springs preserved as a green space and nature park because we don't want to see a repeat of the flood of 85 or any flooding for that matter. We want to see Evan Springs preserved as a green space and nature park because we support the goal outlined in your climate action plan of a 40% tree canopy in the next 10 years. We want to preserve Evan Springs as a green space and nature park as stated in your 2040 plan because growth needs to occur through the preservation and reuse of existing buildings and infrastructure. So these are just a few of the statements. There are many more that I could put out there, but there are a few of the statements that outline our values and are consistent with yours. I'm gonna leave you a couple of things. Number one is a synopsis of the Roanoke City 2040 Plan that outlines 28 statements that speak to equity and trust and 43 statements that speak to preserving nature. And again, I'm just trying to illustrate the fact that there really is no value conflict when it comes to Evan Springs. The question is about process and outcome. Several people have already mentioned that the Evan Springs Plan needs to be updated. Let me talk about why. Over the course of the last two weeks, the global temperature has reached a point of 63 degrees, three times, so this never happened before in history. In Fresno, California, the temperature right now is 112 degrees. There are temperatures of 122 degrees in Iran, 120 degrees in Europe, and 126 degrees in China. So you recognize that we are in a climate crisis. With that being said, again, I want to reiterate the fact that the plan needs to be updated. And just to say in closing, I'm confident in your leadership. I thank you for listening. I look forward to future conversations and I ask you to consider your unique legacy as a council as you make one of the most historic decisions that will ever be made in Roanoke. I want to leave you with one last thing and I want to thank Bill Sweet here for sharing this with me. I'll leave it over here, I guess I'll leave it over here with Suzie. This is a landscape architect magazine that illustrates the creativity that people have put into place when they've had places like Evan Springs that needed to be preserved or developed. And I know, Peter, you're an urban planner, so I think you'll particularly appreciate. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is W., Hunter Hartley.
Good late, late evening. My name is Hunter Hartley. I'm here to speak with you about Evan Springs today. I've been working in Northwest for about a decade on environmental and food security issues. You may not know me personally, but I'm sure you know some of my work. I'm sure all of you are very proud of the progress we've seen with the Roanoke Redevelopment Housing Authority and the Envision Center at Children's Garden out there. I was out there driving post into the ground. I helped design the workforce development program that was actually been in part funded by the city through the Gun Violence Prevention Grant in order to have our young adults in the area learning meaningful, job-ready skills, workforce development training, and growing the food in their own community, which is then available for free through the Envision Center to people who live in Landsdowne. I'm a founding member as well of the group here that's starting the city's first compost facility. I'm also an attorney. I work with a nonprofit firm in the area. Every day, I defend our poorest citizens against unlawful evictions. Finally, I'm a resident of the Melrose Rugby Neighborhood and a member of Friends of Evan Springs. $200,000 has been paid between the city and the property owners for consultations to provide suggestions for... for consultations to provide suggestions for Evan Springs. Yet there's a group of residents, some of them are here, who've organized countless human hours and coordinated with professionals who are giving their expertise without asking for compensation because they understand the importance of this issue. One such professional is Theo Lim, professor of urban affairs and planning at Virginia Tech. You should all already know who Theo Lim is. He's working with the Roanoke City Office Sustainability, the Roanoke City Public Schools, the Roanoke City Libraries, Roanoke City Parks and Recreation Clinic, faith and community groups all throughout Northwest, and Virginia Tech's Urban Planning and Urban Forestry Departments. The difference between how we have organized as a community and how the consultants have organized is the initial framing. The consultants have assumed the end result is a particular style of development. They stated that they have forced compromise to achieve the end results. We have started with the community. We've started with our collective cause for livability, health, safety, and walkability. We've not started here, we have started here because we know that listening to residents is not something you do in order to achieve a goal. Listening to residents is something you do to define what the goal is. When the framing is assumed, proposed alternatives must be forced into that framing. But when you start with livability, when you start with the people, when you start with walkable neighborhoods, you end with a different result from what we've seen. We know this because we are working with urban planners, those who are utmost respected and thus teaching the next generation of urban planners. So what we ask of y'all is to continue to listen, constantly. Listen deeply. We ask the city to recognize that the Friends of Evan Springs has, without hundreds of thousands of dollars, begun work with professionals like Theo Lim to produce our own comprehensive report. As you will see, this report starts with the community's input and builds out suggestions that meet all of our collective needs. Ecological preservation, economic development, housing, livability, safety, health. We expect to have this report to you around the new year. And I would like to reiterate our request that the timetable around decisions be extended so that this report is available to you at the time when you make any pertinent decisions. I'm also submitting a copy, I have one for each of you and everyone else here who's present, from Theo Lim as a precursor to our full report. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Frida Cathcart.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be here this afternoon. It's because I was at the Blue Ridge Cancer Care Center with my husband, who was diagnosed today with stage four cancer. Some days are harder than others. And today is one of those days. Actually, last Wednesday was one of those days when we basically knew it was coming. Today is a day of hope and promise because we got to meet with people that can connect us with the treatments and the care that he needs. And I do feel better today than I did last Wednesday. But I did want to take this time to come down tonight to follow up with what I talked with you about the last time I was here. I sent out a letter, I hope that you all received it, about the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation, the grant opportunities that exist, how to access it. And I want to let you know, I only heard back from one person. It was Michael Clark with the Parks and Recreation Department, who said he'd pass it along to the staff and they would get back to them if anything fitted. So I wanted to connect that with my concerns about neighborhood services right now and what seems to be a disconnect between the communities and the city administration. Because, as the previous gentleman was just saying, the volunteers that live in neighborhoods really step up because we care about our communities and where we live. I did correspond recently with the consultant from Evan Springs, just wondering how many doors they went to. Twenty-one. Where they canvassed twenty-one people and seventeen gave them permission to share their results. I want to compare that to what we did with the Grand and Court Neighborhood Association. Five volunteers got out and knocked on hundreds of doors, where two hundred people signed paper petitions. And I think all of you know how much work petitions take when it does that. The conversations and the effort that went into it. Nobody paid us, and we went out there because we cared about our community. For months, nobody has staffed the Neighborhood Services position here in the city. And there has not been good communication. And I say that because lots of times, the neighborhoods are the ones with the energy and know it needs to be done with like an urban conservation corps and wants to volunteer to bring that money home. Millions of dollars potentially that could come to Roanoke to train future generations and money that would be circulated locally. Please let me help you access this money. We are from the government and we do want to help. And people need to realize that. And not only that, but people want to help the government be successful. We can make such a difference when we all work together. That can improve our quality of life. And boy, some days, thinking about time and quality of life is all that really matters. Thank you.
That was her last speaker.
All right, thank you. Thank all of you for coming out. And there being no further business to come before the council. The council meeting is adjourned.